Terry, do you want to start with the question?
Oh, hi, I'm Terry Proctor, Communications Department.
Michelle DePass on the board.
Aaron Casberg, Senior Program Manager, Energy Sustainability.
And the other Chief Operating Officer?
Sam Calmore, Manager.
Julie Remender, Community Chair.
Liz Lawrence, Contracted General Counsel.
Jackson Hiper, Student Representative.
Anna Lowry, Board Member.
Danny.
Oh, Danny Cage, Student District Councilor.
Mukerah Bradshaw, Executive Assistant.
Rachel Lent, Paralegal.
Right, is Jane being considered there? I don't think so. Okay. Which I, oh, take us a good time. So the, this is item on today's agenda is the student conduct disinformed policy, is there any? Sam, on that?
It's the same as last Friday.
Okay, great, we're gonna jump right in then to the main event and on Friday, we had a very productive meeting, I felt, of working through a consensus amendment, well, probably was a consensus amendment, that both staff and the quality advocates had an opportunity to exchange ideas and would sort of re-review the language and write up our committee discussions and so what we have posted is the the version 25 of policy with integrated in the consensus amendment that I believe so, yes. It's a sweeping conclusion, but I, I believe this reflects where we left off at the end of the last meeting. Okay. And so it's, and as we left off, there were only a few areas where there was not agreement. And the other issue we had is because of the timing of the meeting, we didn't have the benefit of either are the student rep assigned to the committee, Danny Cage or Jackson, it was just maybe a meeting, I also figured the time, I apologize for that because we didn't try and schedule meetings so that students can attend and not accomplish the school day. So, following that meeting, I have an opportunity to, to Danny who wants to walk through the changes and Danny proposed there were two sections in the student, specifically in the C-section 3.2 that he would ask us to revisit, so we're gonna do that today. There's already been some exchange between just of potential language adjustments to, to those two things that there had been agreement on restoring, but it was agreement among the adults, so, and so I appreciate that Danny raised this issue in this section. And then there was one other section was that there was a disagreement about, but it's not understanding there's no longer agreement and we can renew the motion, so, uh, you or somebody else wants to point that out?
I, I'm happy to summarize it since I was the one who asked for time to go back to staff and understand what the issue was and how it was all that psycho content in paper used and in light of the introductory language of explains that there's cost-effective alternatives with time is one of the factors considering how how to implement policy mandates like maximize, I think, without addition and frankly, a dramatic reduction of use of paper because of COVID and the distance learning, you look here or you remember the physical impact to school, particularly some of our schools that have, that end up with more challenged resources, we can get impact as well. So, I think we can manage it through better purchasing and some tools and support and it's also a financially significant, I think, because when this policy discussion started. Darren, is that fair?
Yeah.
So, that is in 1.52, will you remove the motion?
Yes. And I think again, that I want to make sure it's clear that, that staff very much supports using recycled content. We were just trying to make sure that there were not unintended consequences or impacts that can act, uh, serve us in that and I think as we got the setting better up together, we got comfortable with this.
Any questions? Just appreciate you doing that, Paul. Before I get to the language that Danny raised, the sections where there was disagreement, you kind of considered already? Yeah, in 3.2?
I thought we resolved, I thought we had a place where we can resolve pretty much everything except for recycling board.
Um, no, there was like, I think there's a couple of the areas we agreed, we agree to disagree and just want to make sure that we're all clear on where we get on that.
I, yeah, I thought, I really thought we had resolved all of that at the last meeting, that there was cycle content was the only one that still left sort of pending and that everything else had kind of we come to a good place.
Well, that would be like such a great thing.
We did, we, we had a, I think, we had a lot of conversation in the last meeting about this designated sustainability liaison at every, uh, school, but that is not in this draft, so I took that to mean that that had been
Okay, so, well, I want to just call it out because I wanted, uh, it's, it's not in here because there was agreement to take it out.
Yeah.
So I know something's gone, it's because I just did that.
Well, I think there's, that's why you want the committee to take it out. I think that there, you know, those of us who believe this, agreed that we supported taking that out. Herman and I and you've all said yes.
So, but I do, because I think what's a little bit important is that at least we recognize where those were, because I, for to me to say like, hey, if everybody agreed on all this, we almost, almost got there and I, you never, you know, everybody, but I just want to also honor the fact that like, I, I don't want to say angry to this whole draft.
I, I think there's a lot of compromise, I thought this draft reflected the committee's decisions.
Right.
Not necessarily more consensus on all issues.
I just want to make sure I note which, where there wasn't consensus. To move ahead, because I, I agree, there was like compromise on all sides, I just wanted to note where there, there wasn't yet agreement and then the committee made the decisions within, they did the amendment, yeah. So it's the 3.2, it's around this liaison and there was one other one in that section. Uh, there wasn't agreement on the the language about, that was the replacement one we were treating.
Oh, okay, I don't know, maybe there was, but.
Yeah, I thought Jane had, it was Jane, at the meeting that she was fine with that.
Yeah, but I don't want, I don't want to, I'm not trying to speak over behalf.
Like I say, I'm not doing this to like extend the, I'm not, I just want, I, I just want to make sure that I'm not pretending like, hey, this was all
No, I mean, I think at the end of the day, the committee made those, the final call on some of those places where there were still some unresolved pieces.
Okay, so I'll just pull it out because um, let's see, those were committee's decision, I mean, the whole thing was committee's decision, like whether we agreed with, like.
So, what you're saying is when you put up this to the board, you'll look down that we got to consensus with the community partners except for a couple of issues which the committee then just ruled on.
Right, and we, that we put together this consensus amendment that was, you know, in large part reflective of where there ended up to be agreement between staff and the advocates and there were a couple of places where we just made the call.
Yeah.
So I just.
I think that's fair, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Let's see.
And so can you still look at the language from Danny?
Yeah, so the two, the two, um, I want to, I'm going to have to pull out my full draft so that I know the right one. So, this is in 3.2, which is really focused on, I think, student-based. There's a lot of focus on students here.
So it's the sub-goal restoration and revisions are the language we're looking at adding to 3.2.2?
Yeah, and the, oh, so as you, when you look at, you look at an old version of 3.2 that the staff, first of all, the committee made a number of revisions to the overall goal, which then made some of the sub-goals duplicative.
Right.
And so staff recommended we delete some of those that were duplicative, which the committee agreed and, and the advocates. There were two on here though, but in the discussion with Danny that he suggested we uh, if you, I'm sorry, it wasn't 3.25, 3.26 and then also 3.22. Um, so, no, that's, I'm sorry, that's wrong, 3.23. So the original language that utilizes an integrative approach to teaching that recognizes the emotional impact of climate change on individuals and teaches emotional resilience. Um, and then the 3.26 was provide opportunities for students to probe the underlying positive prices and understand the dynamic nature of complex systems and how they change and opportunities for them to practice using these systems. Danny, do you want to speak to the importance of restoring those ones and their revised dates?
Yeah, um, for the first one, about emotional resiliency, it's important to acknowledge that what we're gonna be seeing, especially in the next 10 to 30 years is an increase in depression and anxiety linked in children and in people overall and climate change, and it's important that we are gonna because it is gonna start to be a thing that is starting to get diagnosed, that they're saying moronic, especially people who live in places that have high climate extremities, it's important that we are gonna be able to address that as a district because we are gonna start to have students come in the counselor's office and have anxiety and have depression-based symptoms just simply based on the environment that we live in. And so that aspect itself is important for us to realize and tackle. As a district, like how are we going to be able to recognize the impacts that this has, not on our students just physically, but also emotion, emotionally. And then the one added around understanding structural racism. I think it's important because climate change isn't just a it isn't just one problem, it's a multifaceted problem with, it's very nuanced problem as well. And the underlying cause of climate change is colonialism, so it's important that we, our students recognize that. Especially, I had a conversation with a student at Harriet Tubman Middle School and they made a very good point about how for them to understand climate racism, they get to look outside their window and it's important for us to understand that, right, our students are faced with these issues, but we as a district need to be able to teach them what you're seeing right now as a result of racism, climate change, et cetera, and so they have the tools to put that together.
Uh, Danny, this is Michelle, I want to just appreciate you for bringing that up, I, I had never really considered the emotional impact on climate change as, as I see it. And I thought I'd see today, you probably can't see this, but I have a gift for you, can you see it? Climate change is racist, it's that same premise that climate change is related to structural racism and foundation, a founding uh, foundational to climate change and so I just want to appreciate you bringing that up so articulately and voicing that, that our students will not only need to be, become resilient to mitigate the impacts of, you know, emotional impacts of climate change, but also to, I hope that they understand that climate change didn't just happen, it's, you know, slavery, colonialism and land-taking is all wrapped up in the, what we see today on the ground, what, what we're seeing with the climate change, even, even here in Portland with the 117 degree temperatures last, last summer for the first time ever, like we've never had a cooling season in this in the Pacific Northwest, we've never had air to use, we've never had a cooling season like, like they do in other parts of the country, so. I appreciate you bringing that forth.
So while the, the language, the language on the second one, 3.26 was originally focused on giving students opportunities to probe the underlying causes. The, which Danny talked about restoring it and then the language that was added and I, this is also thanks, thanks to Michelle, although she didn't notice, that based on that book recommendation she made, the I proposed adding the structural racism and then climate change, which was, you should say negative impacts and burdens on color. Um, so it's broader than the original language that was deleted, because the original language was more about the systems and just add systems that handle structural racism. So I, I think it's actually a, a better formulation than even the, than the original one.
I, I like the inclusion of the systems, complex systems too, because at college or graduate school, part of your curriculum does, is systems theory and actually using software to map and, you know, and, and map systems and, and, and and use systems-thinking lenses to solve some of these interactable problems. I think it'd be great to start at the high school level and start talking about systems and and complex systems, whether it's a system in the body, a cell, solar system, or these complex planet systems.
Sounds like they're doing some of that work already at Tubman.
Yeah, mhm.
Any other discussion, committee discussion about potentially adding the language that is supposed to be in the board, the board book?
Yeah, I think that's fabulous, my response, thank you Danny for highlighting that.
That's it. Okay, um, so, we actually agreed to move that into a consensus amendment uh, in the 3.2 section and then I, I hate to kind of ask this, but is there anything else? Because otherwise.
No.
I want to, you know, also honor the fact that Danny and Jackson, you weren't part of the, I think you've been part of all the conversations along the way, but is there anything else that you'd like to share or that's concerning in the draft or?
Well, I think it's been probably either out here or perhaps here in the making, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's, I guess, exciting to finally see something that'll be the work of a professional.
In your middle final speech right now. Anything else, Danny, that you'd like to raise?
Um, no, I think it's good and I am excited to get it out into the community and I'm excited that PPS is leading this. There, as I can tell, there haven't been any other districts really doing this, so I think it's amazing that we can be the role models for other districts.
Amy or Michelle, anything to add?
I have nothing substantive to add. I would like to be able to have us prepare a clean formatted draft to post, so for sure, would that be occasionally if we took, did that?
No, I like the super draft change.
I like the floating like twos and threes, that's the same now.
It was wondering, I thought it was just me.
I think we've also been, Rita Moore and Scotty Lee, who worked on those sub-levels that they did and I, the rest of the community as well. It was also past years committee and we're just finishing what they started on.
Yes, they, and this is something they're both very passionate about and spent a lot of time on, really trying to um, comprehensive and help PPS with it.
Um, so I'm gonna just formally ask for, uh, is there support from the committee to move the consensus amendment into version 25? That's how we formally get the 25.
There are no further versions, that's it.
Well, it is.
Does it become 26?
Pardon?
Does it become 26?
No.
Yes.
It becomes the.
That's, that's what I, that's what I would have thought.
It becomes version 25.
Yeah, it's in 25.
Just a little bit of a subtle change, rushing your bill. We've been through this on, I'm not, it's a minute 25, I've read, take it as well.
Okay, so, everybody on the panel is good with that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, um, great, well, I think, I know that the consensus has been tedious. I agree with a lot, I appreciate all the Saxon meetings, community engagement, the communities' patience and working through it and the students keeping the pressure on us to keep this moving, uh, so with that, we'll, uh, the second question will be um, just committee, it's their committee support to recommend this to the full board for first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Brimmedler, just wanted to note that Director Green, it just arrived and is moving over into the participants section. Right, and his hand was raised and attendees.
Director, I make the motion green.
You just, it's moved.
I only kept raising my hand so that I was praying, somebody is going to see this hand action going up and down, up and down and be like, who is this weird guy that keeps raising and lowering his hands? It's me, begging to be let in, I'm late, but please, don't keep me outside. So I can, I'm gonna lower my hand now and mute myself back.
I'm so glad that you haven't drawn right now because after a year's work we were just getting ready to, we had two amendments that we added in thanks to Danny's engagement. They are centered on this student section, so we added that into the consensus amendment. And we were just getting ready to vote on whether we would recommend this to the full board for first reading or introduction, so.
Sounds, if Danny recommended it, I'm, I'm not even gonna fight against it because the young man knows what he's talking about, so if, if it's a, if it's a Danny Cage recommendation, I'm going with it.
Okay, so, uh, all committee members, thumbs up, thumbs up? Okay, great. Um, all right, well, thank you everybody for all the work of the last year, especially in the staff's leadership, allows us to have a good meeting. And then, geez, why do you do this? It would be grateful with all the conversation just about how we start through our public comment, I'm assuming they'll get public comment on this and your recommendation on what kind of further engagement ever that the public comment committee? We've had a lot of engagement so far and maybe, maybe even like, hey, you you have a lot ready that I'd love to get your thoughts on, so we start getting public comment.
Yes.
So that would be at the February, February 8th? All right.
Yeah.
You know, gender right now.
Ready for ya.
So we have, um, the next agenda item is policies in the public comment period. We have the student representative and the student council policy that we just said, Danny. Now, Jackson or Danny, do you think this, there will be any from DSC or do you think we're? Is that, that would move to a separate reading and adoption at the next meeting. Yes, um. The next thing, anti-discrimination policy, yes. Thank you for the. Um, and then the diploma requirements were from last, it was from last night, so I anticipated this in the public comments.
Some people are really uninvolved with it, they can't wait to set up the comment.
Yeah.
Been less than 24 hours.
I think I may have missed the, I think Ted was supposed to be catch.
It's not for first reading.
Okay, well, congratulations to everybody's collaboration department.
No, it is good in your own. Um, yeah, so you missed also like the appreciation for the staff because, you know, consensus has been tedious and I know, I know at times you got your oar in the, in the water and that is, I think, also moved, moved things forward and got us to a better, like sharper, quicker point, so thank you for your.
Well, I can add the same conversely for, for our student leaders, for the advocates. You know, I, I do what I appreciate about it is, I think that's PPS apart as a leader and policy, I think from what we can go, we've also agreed with the spirit, that sort of an intention of the policy, I'm glad that you sort of drilled it down with the language that provides clarity. So, we're looking forward to, you know, this advancing and this work moving forward. Okay, sorry to interrupt your meeting.
I'm just sorry, Danny, you weren't guilty of the, the homeland.
Sorry. I'll watch the recording.
Director Green happened to just drop in right at the right time so we could like, you know, run through the tape with the rest of us. So we're just going into the, the front of the short meeting. So the non-discrimination and anti-discrimination policy, um.
That's what I'm just gonna show.
Do we have any, that's the same thing I just went out last night too, right?
Yeah, the diploma requirements, we didn't go into it last night, but I'm, I'm wondering if you could just vote the committee and everybody else, since we talked a lot about essential skills during the high school presentation.
I, I'll, I'll do you one better, I actually, after listening to the essential skills conversation and reading the language, I think it technically works. I actually think we should revise it further and we should do it. So, I've got someone working on that and I, it's a little late for me to show up with that opinion, but that's my opinion about how others who want to understand that policy can better understand it, I think while technically compliant, it's harder to understand, listening to that conversation.
Well, what I appreciate Liz is not that you're showing up late with that opinion, but then like you continue to listen and revise and be thoughtful and I think that staying curious and continuing to improve is what's vitally important.
So we made, we assessed whether a technical change was needed because of the legislation.
Right.
What we didn't do well is figure out how people maybe understand the policy that translated, like, and I think it needs some more.
Yeah, that's, that's, I really appreciate that.
So, and that, and that's my team in the middle of reading last night, I just couldn't circle with you after you adjourned this one, but now, there you go.
And it's, so it just seemed awkward then to have a conversation about, we're gonna be changing these other things, but ignore that whole section on the essential skills, we're just talking about.
Yeah, right, but that's, I mean, it's the state statute, right, so that's part of the issue.
Right, but we need to make clear so that people who want to understand how they need to get a diploma can read that and know what it means. And I'm just, I, I think it's not where it needs to.
Yeah, and the state board's actually doing a full evaluation of what are the requirements are anyways right now. Like look over like, because we're one of the states that require the essential skills, um, so they're looking at other states and what they're requiring this what we can do and if we should even make a decision.
Okay.
And so. So for clarification, this is coming from the state or?
So Danny, the, if you look at the board, the packet for this committee, it has the diploma changes that we're making and so the, the diploma policy is oh, it's.
4.20.0.
And all the, like, the changes are from English to language arts to, you know, make it less racist and adding civics as part of the social sciences curriculum and then that the governor has suspended the essential skills component for two years?
Yeah, but our policy still has.
2024. 2024.
Our policy still has a lengthy discussion about essential skills, even though the state has suspended it. So, I say, this was more of a clean-up issue about why we even had it on our agenda.
But we got it, we did. But we got it, we did, did it for first reading last night, but we're thinking we need to amend it further.
Yes, so that, I, yeah, I'm just gonna take this to the committee chair in the draft. But I, I think, and I, I obviously, with the Quail and the Big Union, and then other constructional side of the house, but, but I, I think it's again, it's technically part of the section C, section E is very, it'd be very hard to figure out.
I have a question, and I don't know if I should be asking it as part of this or something else, but I'm gonna put it out there all the same. Last night when we were going over the, um, the high school diploma requirement section, and we were talking about the, like, you know, the Language Arts, it, it sparked something to me, um, that I know some of our, um, when I was working at, um, I shouldn't say working, because I have never got a check from Roosevelt. Um, but when I was volunteering at, um, Roosevelt and working with, um, a lot of our, our Somali families or families, our refugee families, they're all, they're all having to take, um, like an English language course, right? But they have to take, they're taking that because they're, they're learning the language, but then they also have to take like Spanish, or French, or Japanese, or something else, in order to get their, their credits for taking a, a language course. Is there a way, or where would we start beginning the conversation around, if you're taking English to learn English, are you not learning another world language? So how do we make, how do we make it so that they can get credit for what they're already learning, having to learn to do anyway? Instead of now, we've got students that are having to actually double up on their, on their, um, their language classes, because they're needing to take, they gotta take this English, because they gotta learn it, so they gotta take this ESL class, and then they gotta go and take French or Spanish, or, so is there a way for us to start somewhere where we can start looking at what we do and our requirements to so that they can, I, I just feel like we're making it harder for students, we're giving them more, and it's not, it doesn't seem equal to me.
We have one educator in the room that's a super, personally, it's the superintendent.
Yeah, so I'll do the best I can, so to Director Holland's point, um.
Green. Green.
Director.
It's black people with a beard, don't you dare say we all look alike.
I don't remember what glasses on, but I know it's you. I don't know if, um.
You're not sitting next to each other getting in trouble at a board meeting.
Right.
I know, that's, and I missed that.
See, thank you.
Might have to be assigned to something.
I don't know if the red line changed here around Language Arts is, is partly intended, uh, for that, because it's speaking about students' enrollment in language development, to your point, uh, Dr. Green. Uh, separately, there's, you know, elective options like world language that could be taken. But, you know, I, I think the essential skills here in this policy is, is, is more oriented to that English learner. Uh, in other states, and this is a topic I did a lot of work on previously, uh, in another state, and there was, there was a statewide exam, the casey. Uh, you know, the folks needed, the students needed to pass to, to prove that essential skill, similar to here, and that's been waived temporarily. Uh, and I don't know if at the state board level, there'll, there'll be sort of other alternatives. Um, you know, it could be S back, it could be some other norm reference test, uh, or not. Uh, we also see that the SAT is sort of, I think I heard in the podcast this morning, that it's dying a slow down, uh, and it's going electronic, and it'll be more accessible, it'll be shorter, uh, I, and, and if most of us, uh, were encouraging, uh, haven't been encouraging it, you know, maybe, maybe that's a one of the measures that could be used to check off, uh, for that, so, you know, what I appreciated about the conversation yesterday, meeting diploma requirements is sort of a credit-earning exercise, and what I appreciate is sort of, what I think I heard is, we want the PPS diploma to mean something. I'm not saying it doesn't mean anything right now, but we want it to meet a minimal standard, so whether you're a gen ed student, if you're a student with special needs, if you're a student with, um, if you're an English language learner, so I I, I think to be also in line with policy now, while this waiver is in place, and how do we sort of also be aligned with the board's expectation? Is there a temporary pause? Do we wait to see what the state level conversation is? Um, or do we wanna offer some other alternative at this point? I, I think it's probably something to debate.
But I think to get to the heart of some of what Director Green was asking about, these requirements are in line with the state requirements, so I think that conversation about how does, how do English language learners fit into that world language category, and what the clarity is there, that's a question for ODE.
They did actually revise their statutes, so world language will count as any language that's not their primary language, so if you're learning English in an English language development class, that would count as a world language.
And I think that's part of why we've changed it from English as a Language Arts, because that's learning about writing and reading and critical thinking,
It's primary language to.
rather than English as a language that you're learning, you're developing.
Actually, I, I think the, uh, okay, unless the state law changed, but the world language is a PPS requirement, not a state requirement.
There's a definition for world language.
What I'm saying is, the, I believe the state requirement is twenty two credits, not the, um, not the twenty four and the, is that correct?
I, I thought, yes, they added the world language.
And then PPS. Yeah, because I think that was on the board, because, okay, here, here was the thinking. Unless the state has quality, in two thousand five, the district added as part of our graduation requirements, we had to have two world languages, and the reason we did that is at the time, every public university.
No, it's in the state, I just ruled it.
It used to not, it used to not mean, it was.
It is now.
So that twenty four credits required, or twenty two?
So it's, so it's four in Language Arts, three in Algebra I and above in math, science is three. Second language, oh, it's second language, the arts, career and technical education is three.
Yeah, so we separate.
For a total of twenty four credits, and then you also have to take health, physical education, six of the electives, and three social science.
Because we has created, because you couldn't actually, all the public universities require you have to use a world language to, for admission, and it's like, why would we have lower standards? Like, where would you say, this is your diploma, but you're not actually qualified to get into a public university, so on our own, we did that, um.
So that career and technical education, the arts are a third credit, world language, that's actually the state, but we call out the two of world language separately.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, I'm, 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 um, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, because Jack would be here, because I think that's, anyways. Uh, maybe if you all had a point of view on whether we have the flexibility, and whether that's a good idea, um, to create some sort of flexibility, because it does seem sort of like, hey, you have to learn and know three languages versus everybody in assessment too.
Well, I think since Liz is gonna do some revision and looking at this, it would be a perfect time to maybe pull this from, from public comment, or briefly to up for public comment, but do some of this work that goes to Director Green's question about, what does equity look like around this world language requirement that the state sort of has?
Mm-hmm.
Free, it's world language arts or CTE, and how, what is that for PPS students, and I think that, that issue around, I do think our public has some sort of expectation that a PPS diploma means that you would be eligible for acceptance into, oh, U of R, OSU. So I think we need to have some pretty clear communication that, that two years of world language is a requirement for admission, which is what, I think, we put it in there to help our students, but we also need to be cognizant of those students for whom that's a barrier.
Yeah.
Right, and that's, and that's what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the equity around having our students who speak another, another language, it's like, you're telling a, a Latino person, he, they have to take Spanish because they need, um, they need two credits, or whatever, that's, that's dumb. And so English people, English learners don't have to, you don't have to learn English, and you, it's just, we're making Somali families, anybody that doesn't speak English is have, I feel, I could be wrong. But anybody that doesn't speak English is having to work twice as hard when it comes to the language classes, because they have to take, they have to take more than one class.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll set that back down.
But, but they also come to us with more multilingual capacity too.
Right, well, Jackson's saying instead of a seal of bi-literacy, there's a seal of multi-literacy now. Because you have people who are literate in.
Trilingual.
Trilingual.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't think we wanna set up a local, you know, grad requirements, of course, they should, they should be aligned with at a minimum with the state expectation, but you don't wanna disadvantage the English learner, and so I saw, I've seen this happen, that prior district is, you meant everything else, but because your ESL class didn't count as an English class, it, it automatically forced a whole population of students to have to do a fifth year oftentimes.
Wow.
To take that, to, to complete their English course sequence, and so I do think when you just sort of explore and see how the state is thinking about defining Language Arts versus English or world languages, and so.
Yeah, I'm thinking about the world language, because when I think, when I think Language Arts, I'm thinking that's an English class, like, I think that's English, math, science, I'm, I'm thinking about the one where we say world language. World language could be Spanish, it could be Japanese, it could be French, it could be whatever other languages that we as in PPS have, um, educators and the ability, um, to offer. But again, I'm just looking at, some, some students have to actually learn English. And can that, can that count, because they're actually having to learn English?
Then one more.
As a world language, not Language Arts.
Right, and, and some districts are thinking about the question on, and what about American Sign Language?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I heard that too.
First conveying language, then it should count for credit.
Yeah, I, I've heard that conversation.
Yeah, and I, I take, I take ASL as my world language at my school.
Yeah, and I did it in college as well, it's my third language, um, fourth language actually. So how I'm gonna, uh, look at the pin in this conversation is, uh, thank you, Director Green, it's very timely for you to raise that issue. Um, Liz is gonna work with staff on coming back on something with the essential skills, and then, um, also, uh, liaising with this superintendent, glad you were here for the discussion. Yeah, so, um, coming back with a recommendation, um, either whether it's policy language or something else, um, or it's more complicated, or I think we should have us.
No, having been down this road before, the, the, the guidance will widen from the board as far as, uh, how, how, to what extent is, is it implied, so having been in this conversation before, where, you know, we also had ambitious graduation, uh, rate improvement goals, you know, we made it more rigorous by saying, uh, needing UCCSE requirements was a minimum for every student, um, and secondly, it needed to be, we were gonna track on track, off track, and we were gonna track C or better, not just D or better. And so just as another measure, so given the conversation we were having last night, those are all the things that it's not gonna be thinking about.
Great. Uh, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for raising that, uh, it's a really good issue for, to think about with our graduation requirements. All right, um, there is nothing, uh, under legislative or regulatory, private policy changes for this meeting, although we've got one kind of.
Yes.
Uh, so just flag for people, we have another one there, and then, um, Tara or Roseanne, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Uh, is there any other business? Okay.
Don't think so.
We're gonna wrap it up, and again, just thank you for the committee, um, for all the hard work and comment.
And, and, and to usual, that we didn't need one of that, and also, create the path for that.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna say that, that track change version of the one document, because I don't think there was.
I think we might have to load up and bring that data to your house.
So, really good work.
Make a piece of artwork down, put that up, nobody will miss. No, this, that was really, that was a really, um, great effort, just the, the consensus building, the book sites, all sites.
Yeah, I, I think that's our, I think we have a really strong, um, platform to launch policy when we get to the introduction. And support for the staff, so, you know, we should know what they, the, they want.
Let the record reflect, uh, Director Bremmer was wearing low top air dorkies, classics.
Classic ones.
My, my favorites. Jackson, Danny, good luck with your remaining finals.
Yeah.
Good luck with your finals.
Almost there. Okay, everyone, this is out of luck.
Yeah.